As you can see, this meeting is being held in person. It may be viewed live on local cable, channel thirteen oh three, or online by visiting www.bucksportmaine.gov and clicking Watch Meetings under the Town Council section. Questions or comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmaine.gov or by calling two zero seven three zero seven eight zero three zero during the meeting. Couple of housekeeping things. The standard spiel, this would be a great time to silence your electronic devices. If you are going to speak this evening as a member of the public, please come to the podium. And there's nowhere in this room that you can say anything, even under your breath, that the microphones won't pick it up. As you will see, our town manager is called into the meeting this evening. She is a little bit under the weather, but she's tough. And so we're going to try to not make her speak too much this evening because she did talk earlier. She sounds like her, but we'll see how we can do on that front as well. I think that's all the housekeeping, so Jacob, we'll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Tarian.
Here.
Counselor Hare.
Here.
Mayor Bissonnet.
Here.
Counselor Rabs.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Rankin.
Here.
Thank you. If you do have an agenda, you will, we did have a recognition scheduled this evening, but our poet laureate, or our soon to be former poet laureate could not be here this evening. So we're going to move that recognition to our first meeting in June, which is June the 12th. I did want to take a minute this evening, though, just to mention the passing of Joel Sankey, who, to describe him as a football coach would not be doing him justice. He was a football coach for a long time here in Bucksport, but he taught at Bucksport High School for a very long time. I have two adult children who spoke very highly of Mr. Sankey, and I'm sure that there are people sitting right here around this desk that would do the same. I would just like to, in my time, in a former life as the chair of the Bucksport School Committee, I always valued my conversations with Joel and found him to be extremely committed to all of the students that he found coming under into his classroom, whether they wore shoulder pads or not, that is for sure. So I am sure that Bucksport High School this week is struggling, and I don't like to think about that. But I certainly wish Mr. Sankey, his family, and those at Bucksport High School the best. I'll afford anyone else. I knew if I talked about the high school, I knew that would be, that would, that would get me. But anyway, thank you, everyone. A moment of silence, please, for Mr. Sankey. Thank you, everyone. We do have the minutes of our previous meeting on May the 8th. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Any questions or comments? How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Opposed. Thank you. We have several items under correspondence. We have a thank, two thank you letters, one from Families First Community Center, as well as Life Flight of Maine for our funding in the previous year. We have the Verona Island Police Call from May the 8th, and we have a ridership report for April from Down East Transportation. Any questions on those? We don't have any ordinances to consider or introduce this evening. We have a couple of discussion items. The first is a report from the Infrastructure and Properties Committee. Great meeting earlier this evening, and I will ask Counselor Hare to give an update.
Sure. So we, we had two items on the agenda this evening. We had, we changed the agenda up. We had a discussion and recommendation regarding the sewer rate adjustment, and the committee voted to move the item to discussion to council for the next agenda to, we voted to keep it at the proposed location that's been in the previous discussions, as well as to assign me to be the person to help skate Bucksport, put together their RFP. So we voted to move that to council for next, next agenda. And as well as the sewer rate adjustments, we made a recommendation to council for discussion to, to move forward with those sewer rate adjustments, but on a two-year plan, so it would be broken up for citizens. We voted for that to be put on the next agenda for discussion as well.
Questions or comments? Good update. Thank you, Counselor. We also have a priority docking agreement with American Cruise Lines, which is a request for referral to the Infrastructure and Properties Committee.
Good evening again, everyone. American Cruise Line has reached out to the town with a priority docking agreement that they would like us to consider. We, as a staff, have reviewed it and have made some suggestion, suggested changes to it. We've ran it through the town attorney for, for his input, but with the council's blessing, we'd like to schedule an infrastructure committee prior to your next meeting for the council to review that and make a recommendation on that, so.
We can make sure that that's discussed later in the agenda, will we discuss any other assignments, but I assume there's no opposition to that?
No.
Sure I don't forget. All right. We have four agenda items this evening. The first is resolve twenty twenty-five dash five eight, which is approving the regional school unit number twenty-five budget validation referendum warrant and notice of election. That was included in our packets. It has been made public by the RSU. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, comments?
Just comments. Last night, Councilwoman Jen and I attended the, it's called the District Budget Meeting up at the Performing Arts Center. We went as taxpayers. You know, the four towns, if you add up, all the population amounts to about eighty-seven-hundred people. In the Arts Center last night, I think there were thirty to thirty-five people, if you counted all the people on stage. At one point, we did have to take a paper vote, and it was twenty-seven to one. That's how few people showed up. Last night, under twenty articles, total budget is going to be nineteen million nine-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand dollars, about a six-point-five-seven percent increase. They went through the twenty articles in about thirty minutes. That kind of money went, it, it was, again, back to the point, eighty-seven-hundred population, basically thirty people made the decisions last night. It was rather staggering, I thought. So what this is all about here now is, coming up on June 10th, we'll have open ballot to decide whether to approve it and some other things on the ballot. But anyway, ju- just a comment that nineteen million dollars and thirty people, it just leaves me shaking my head, so. Please come out and vote.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All's in favor? Opposed. Thank you. Resolve twenty twenty-five dash five nine, authorizing the town clerk to serve as warden for the June 10th, twenty twenty-five regional school unit number twenty-five budget validation election.
I do have a question for that.
Sure.
Jacob, if we, what, what is our current structure with, with that positioning of this in time? Are you, are you, who's serving? Are you going to be serving in that capacity for this?
Yes.
For that duration of time?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, specifically, that would be Jacob. Yep. Did I hear a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I hear a motion. Two seconds.
Yep. Is there a second?
Oh, we need one second.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All's in favor? Resolve twenty twenty-five dash six zero, approving an administrative consent agreement between the town of Bucksport and Duane Weston concerning property located at eleven eighty-two River Road. The information on that's included in your packet. Entertain a motion unless you really would like to talk with Luke first. I don't know if you have anything you want to say other than what's in the packet.
He's agreed to this. I was just confirming that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other questions? Just making sure. All right. All's in favor? Opposed. Thank you. And resolve twenty twenty-five dash six one, which is to approve the expenditure of one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars from the municipal building reserve for signing and trim repairs, I believe, right here, just over there. Any questions or comments on that?
I thought that was a good price, honestly, for what I saw.
Motion to approve? Second.
Second. All's in favor? Opposed. Thank you. We don't have any resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections this evening. We don't have any, need to approve any quick names, discharges, or deeds. We do have a report for our town manager, and I have, if Sue wants to read it, I'm not going to tell her she can't, but we do have the assistant town manager who is prepared to step in for her if she feels she can't do it.
She could get to it. That would be great.
All right.
So we're requesting an infrastructure meeting, as we've already talked about, but in addition to the American Cruise Line, the Methodist Church would like to discuss the possible use of the triangular piece of property adjacent to the church as a park, since it is not buildable due to the utilities running under the site. Also on that agenda, we could include a lease for the senior center, since changes have been requested to that. Town Manager Lassard has begun review of the landfill closure plan and has submitted some written comments to the DEP in regard to it. We have until mid-June to submit comments, and the final closure plan shows a closure date of twelve thirty-one twenty-six, which is what DEP requested. Town Manager Lassard has also completed review of the second round of documents from Bucksport Mill LLC and has forward, forwarded relevant comments to our attorney. There will be a sit walk in mid-June with the towns, our attorney, and Bucksport Mill LLC representatives. We received word today that the former owner of the Spring Fountain intends to continue with both the state and federal case with his attorney, Mr. Baldacci, serving as legal counsel for both. Our attorney will be filing a motion to dismiss in the state case. Town Manager Lassard and I are having a meeting with Main Water on May 28th for the purpose of discussing our contract and staffing and to get an update on our system. Interviews and second interviews for the clerk and deputy clerk positions are ongoing, with the goal of having a deputy onboard within a few weeks and the clerk by the beginning of July. And finally, the Bucksport Bay Business Coalition is hosting a walkathon to benefit the Bucksport Animal Shelter on Friday, June 7th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the Bucksport United Methodist Church. Sponsorship forms are available in the town office lobby located on the table near the entrance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Sue. Any questions for either Jacob or Sue?
The 7th is a Saturday.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Come on.
Um, Bucksport. We had a look this afternoon at the really thick response on the landfill, and it shows a lot of detail and a lot of stuff we don't understand. So part of what we're concerned about is the idea that we have a very short time to turn around any kind of public comment or review. And I know, sorry, I'm turning toward you, Sue. I know there've been some comments already around this subject. We came up with this feeling, and the feeling is that none of us in the Bucksport public group client have the expertise to figure out what the heck all that stuff means. We can read the narratives and get a general sense, but if there's zingers in there, we have no way of evaluating that. So one of the questions we came out of, and we'll continue to sift through it as we are able, is, and if I'm going to get you into a situation where your strategy is threatened, you don't have to answer.
Okay.
Exactly who does the council have in mind to take a hard look and sift through it in the amount of time and throw up some flags about this is an issue we should pursue or not, because we're headed for the deadline of December 2026, and we have relatively two weeks, three weeks maybe, to respond in writing to DEP. So there's a lot to do in a short amount of time, because from our perspective, we didn't know the ticker started in, last November on the public comment portion of the world. So does the council have somebody onboard that they can use to sift through this for their own benefit, or, and, and I know, yes, Sue, but I think, at any rate, so the question that we have is, is, is there going to be somebody you can bring on short term that will be able to do all of that and come back with a response and make some extra responses to DEP? So that was one of our questions, because where we can look through stuff, we don't necessarily know the difference between this is a behind-the-scenes zinger and this isn't. There's just an awful lot of data there. The other question is, from just looking at the narratives in different sections, we didn't come up with an awareness of who's actually going to be the onsite monitor doing, watching out for the town or the state DEP. On the quality assessments and the quality controls, actually, when whatever's approved to go forward, goes forward. Who's, are they going to be self-checking? That sounds a little specious. And I guess a part of it that reflects to me, and I, it looks like, and maybe this is normal, that they're trying to fill the application and do the barest minimum. I would too, if I was a big company like this. Maybe not. The licensing is way back to nineteen ninety-seven, the specs for how you operate a landfill. And I don't know whether constrained to that, or they can, some of the newer regulations can be applied or not, I don't know. But it looks like some of the stuff that they're espousing, that this is good enough to do, and it may well be, is minimalized as much as possible. That may be a wrong assessment, but for instance, in some of the places, they're suggesting that there are three different levels of approach. The mid-level doesn't put a thicker membrane over anything but the cap on the sides that have different slopes and the other slide that slopes towards the south. And it looks like they can put a thin layer of plastic down, along with a whole lot of substrate, and then cover, or they can do without. And according to their guesstimations by their engineer, z-ing firm, it should still meet the minimum requirements or fall below the minimums for, in that case, stormwater percolation out and through. But I know I'm from away. Where I came from, the landfill for our whole county was rebuilt and built by the firm that I worked for, so I have some loose awareness of membranes and, and the pipes to burn off the methane and what you do after. Nowhere in there, they're proposing, Bucks Mill LLC, to put a thin layer of plastic in, and that thin layer is four hundredths of an inch thick, which is one mil plastic. I have trash bags thicker than that. And when you think about what's going to be put underneath and stuff over top and then run over top of it with big machinery, I'm not really convinced that's a better approach. But if we're constrained by the nineteen ninety-seven rules, that will make it. So these are questions. I have no answers for these questions, but hoping that it'll start the ball rolling for either getting answers or making you think about, yeah, maybe, I don't know. I don't know, because you've got plans in gear. So that was it.
Great.
And thank you for your time.
Yep. I will, I know the town manager's voice, but I will, I will give her an opportunity to respond as best as she can, especially because on the strategy piece, but any of the other questions that she feels ready to address.
Well, she's not feeling great, whatever works.
I think she, I think she wants the opportunity, if I know her, but anyway.
I lived and worked through the closure of Pine Tree Landfill in Hampton. We negotiated that closure. That closure was done under the review of the town and the state. And I lived through the capping and closure of the landfill on Vinyl Haven, just the first one offshore one to be done in a different way. The, the things that are being discussed, the, you know, how thick the, the geotextile membranes are and where they're located, all those things, it, I, in, in talking to DEP Karen before she retired and the new person, what's been proposed doesn't mean that's what DEP is going to say to use or to do. They have proposed not to cut, use a geotextile membrane over the whole thing, to use soil cover in some areas. And, and in some of the comments that I have submitted for technical review is the fact that we would want a geotextile covering the whole thing, not just pieces of it to create as impervious a surface as possible. Other items such as leachate treatment and that kind of thing, which are not addressed, at least to my satisfaction, and this thing have also been highlighted as issues that need to be corrected. If, if, if what's being asked is, is the town going to hire an engineer to look it over and say, this is better than this, I'm not sure that that's, I think what's necessary is that we identify the areas where we have disagreement over what's been proposed. And those areas relate to the type of cover system that is used, the type of leachate system that is done, what kind of gas extraction they have, they have recommended, they are saying they're going to do passive gas extraction. That is a recipe for odor issues in a cap landfill. There's no public notice program in this, this cover. Anyway, there's a laundry list of things that in my first run-through I have identified, but, and the DEP staffer has referred those to their technical people, because their technical people are the ones that are reviewing this to see if it is an appropriate answer. And does it have to use the same stuff that was identified as being used in a, in a closure in nineteen ninety-seven? No. They, there's newer materials, newer materials are used. So I'm not saying that I am the landfill guru of the world, but I have as much experience in being able to identify the pieces of this closure plan that will need more eyes on them than other areas of the plan. It, however, it's up to the council. If you want to solicit an outside engineer to go through this, that would be up to you, but I'm not sure you're going, you don't want them to redesign a landfill cover. You want someone to identify what's questionable or what's been proposed, and then it's up to the department to request changes in that, not for the town to have engineered.
Thank you.
I think I'm comfortable saying, however, that when our present town manager, when Sue mentioned this several months ago, that she would be getting done at the end of June, I want to make sure that we're clear on one thing. She also indicated that she was going to continue her work with the town on both the landfill and the dam situation beyond her actual retirement date. I don't think I'm holding her to anything she didn't agree to by saying that, just except to say that if there, I just would want to get ahead of any misconception that could be out there, that June 30th, Sue Lassard's work on this would stop. And that is not at all what the, the plan here is, so.
I committed to see this to the end.
Yep.
And at no additional cost to the town post June 30th.
Any other questions on the, for the town manager?
All set.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Let's see. We do need to set a public hearing. We need to set a public hearing for the general fund, sewer, marina, and capital budgets, and we should set that public hearing for our next meeting on June 12th. I don't need to take a vote on that, do I? So that will be on our next agenda, is the public hearing, that. Yep. Yep. A discussion of items not on the agenda for the council and the public. Anyone else from the public this evening? Mr. St. Peter.
Hi. How are you, folks? Steven St. Peter, Jr., Bucksport resident and EV advocate. So as I mentioned before, I won an award for EV Champion in 2024, and I'd like to show everybody. So, and I've been nominated for two other awards. I'm not going to say what they are. I don't want to jinx it. But I've been getting more and more people interested in electric vehicles and sustainability and learning more about it. I have another dealership in Tennessee, and I've also got one in Richmond, Virginia that want to work with me and help people find electric cars. So I've been, I've been busy. The, the need and want for electric vehicles is growing. So just wanted to let everybody know. And there's also a press release coming out that Paula Key wrote, so that's going to be in several different newspapers, so, just wanted to let everybody know.
You're very committed to that effort, Steven.
Yes, I am.
Congratulations on that award.
I've got more interviews coming, so.
Absolutely. It's for the public.
I don't have anything, hi, Tris. I don't have anything really newer and lightning to say here, except I was one of the small group of people who were looking through the report there earlier today, and came away with the same feelings that Tom had, that, I mean, this is beyond our field of expertise, though there is our people out there in the community who do have some expertise in this matter. And I think I'm a little uncomfortable with, for you, Sue, being out there as our hero out there doing, and I guess my question is, what can we as members of the community do to support you and help you in what you're doing here? I know one just example, sitting here in the room, Ralph Chapman, has a great deal of experience in tapping off mines and so on, and he does understand the talk of these filters and the textures that go in to prevent the leak of the methane gases and so on. And I'd, it'd be a shame to not have his input or his support for you and your mission here. So I want to say as far as I can to just offer support from the community to the council and Sue to you as a leader on this matter.
Thank you for that. I'll tell you that we're very lucky to have Sue, where she's been on the Board of Environmental Protection since 2007 and has lived through many of the things that she described earlier. So it's very easy for us to sit here and really defer to her experience for the things that we need on that.
But even Sue, even wonderful Sue, could benefit from some support in the community, and that's what we can offer.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate, certainly, I think, Sue, I think you're, you're aware of the fact that if you wanted another set of eyes... if you wanted another set of eyes on that, that there are resources available to you for that purpose.
When, when we received the copy in-house of the updated plan, which was just last week, I let Don White, who is my contact person for the group that's doing this, know. And some people were in, certainly, anyone is welcome, and anyone who has suggestions or questions or things that they believe should be more thoroughly examined in, in this process. There, there certainly, anyone's free to send them directly to DEP, but I, to Stacy Cannon, but if, if they are not comfortable with that, I'm happy to transmit those questions and observations to her as well as part of the comments.
Yep. I think we're very fortunate to have the group of people that we've had that have been as active and can, and expressed a vocal concern about the status of the landfill and the, and the, somebody who's been here through the entire process of, of this since they came to us and with, with an offer, so to speak, which seems like a million years ago now, when it really wasn't. But we've had a group of very concerned, uh, concerned and active citizens that have stayed on top of that and asked a bunch of good questions. So I think we've been very fortunate to have that. We encourage you to continue to ask those questions and et cetera. Anyone else? Uh, for the council. Rich, you don't have anything? Not to put you on the spot, just making sure. All right. Yep. All right. Uh, let's see. So upcoming public hearings, we've already talked about the public hearing on June twelfth for the general funds, sewer, marina, and capital budgets. We also earlier discussed an infrastructure committee meeting on June the twelfth regarding the American Cruise Line's request. Are we aware of the need for any other meetings?
It'd be the skate park at the same infrastructure.
Infrastructure? Would be infrastructure, council.
We'll have a resolve.
Yeah. Yep. Anything else?
It's not our next meeting, but the, just to let you know, June twenty-sixth, the, the next cemetery committee we're hoping to have at five P M, if that works.
So before this meeting at five P M?
Correct.
Got it. Not next meeting, but the meeting after. All right. Five weeks from now. This is one of those months where our next meeting is in for three weeks, and it feels like we haven't seen each other in a million years yet. Yep.
Infrastructure was six o'clock. I just went brain dead.
Yep, it was. All right. The second to last item on the.
Did you add the other two? Excuse me.
No, please.
Mayor Bissonette, did you add the other two items that were in the manager's report for the triangle for the Methodist Church and the contract for? The senior center? Those were in the manager's report as a request for an infrastructure committee meeting.
You must forget something. So we might want to. Yeah, that should, then we should definitely meet. It will, six o'clock be enough time to meet with, on the American Cruise Line thing as well as those two other things, or should we move, should we aim for five thirty?
What are the other two again? Could you repeat those?
Yep. It's the, um, the Methodist Church would like to discuss the possible use of the triangular piece of property adjacent to the church as a part. And the lease use of the senior center. So that could be a, if we set the meeting for five thirty and we finish early, then we finish early, but it's always awkward to end a meeting because we've got a council meeting coming right now.
I'm fine in five thirty.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm fine.
Jacob, would you let Public Safety Director Gagin know that we're scheduling that for that time, so we can be part of that part conversation? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anything else? Awesome. All right. Now for budget review, um, because the full packet was included with everyone's things this evening, just a discussion point, at least to kick off our revenues, as well as the second draft of the expense budget. So I'll turn it over to the Assistant Town Manager to discuss revenue, as well as our town manager.
Like Mayor Bissonette said, the revenues were included towards the back of your packet. I will highlight just some of the big picture items and certainly feel free to ask questions as we go along. I think the biggest picture here is a significant reduction in our revenues for general government, and that is because we have eliminated any surplus or reserve sort of allocation into this budget, which is a considerable decrease. Bucksport was very fortunate to have a considerable level of savings and funding when the mill closed. And so for the past ten years, we've been very fortunate to be able to pull from some of those reserves. But of course, not, not replenishing those reserves, there comes a time when you can't do that any longer. And so that's, that's where we're at. Uh, and so this is a pretty considerable decrease in revenues and what we're, we're normally seeing, but other than, other than those, those lines, like the, there's really no major differences to the, to the general government part of revenues. It, it covers a, a number of things, our motor vehicle excise tax that we discussed at a, during your highway budget presentation. You can see that line, that's over a million dollars. Our, you know, a number of other things, other excise tax, the registration fees that the town keeps when people come in to register their cars. State revenue sharing comes in through this department. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, or if Sue wants to add anything.
What page are we looking at with our excise tax break?
Oh, it's page, I'm looking at page one eleven, but I think the.
Page one eleven?
Yep.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, Council Bishop. I'm sorry.
I. There's only a hundred and thirteen.
Towards the end.
I know this is in a lot of lines, anticipated revenue, but I guess I'll ask the question around the interest on investments. I'm sure I know the answer, but I'm not a big, I, I don't, things don't go well, and I just assume I know the answer. So can we talk about the, why the, we are anticipating a reduced gain on investment?
Because we have less money.
Yep.
And I'm sorry to answer that bluntly, but that's the best way that I can.
That's fine with me. Just wanted to make sure I was not putting anything together. Yeah. It may be helpful, even though I think I know about ninety percent of the answer going off memory, but it may be helpful, and I think you touched on this a moment ago, but let's just be sure, on the, the school designated surplus, could we, it might just be helpful for anyone paying attention as to why that is zero this year as opposed to previous years.
Within state law, school districts are allowed to have a certain percentage of, I believe, their total budget within their fund balance. And anything above and beyond that is supposed to be distributed back to the municipalities. And RSU twenty-five over the past several years has been fantastic about that. Other communities, the process has been followed in, in a little different way, but here in RSU twenty-five, I think it's been at least two years, right, Sue, that we had money back from the RSU?
It was two years, but it was four years ago and then the year before that.
Yeah. So.
And those monies can only be used for educational expense after you, after they give them back. And so they were appropriated in years subsequent to that to reduce taxes.
Right. And so, again, they were above their percentage that they're allowed to have by law, so that was given back to the communities. And so this past year was the final year of that. The, again, the, the budget stabilization reserve, that was, again, it was a, it was a, a way of, of trying to keep the budget steady. And similarly, that state revenue sharing reserve, thirteen oh five, from my understanding, every, for many years, any amount with the town received from state revenue sharing that was over and above what was budgeted for was placed into the state revenue sharing reserve. And so that's where that money came from. So.
Any other questions on any of these?
I do just want to talk about the, the marina real. Oh, boy, I said the wrong button. I didn't want to talk about the marina. I don't have the number in front of me now, but I just wanted to acknowledge and confirm that it, it does appear that with all the attention that we have put onto it, that it is keeping up very well financially and is going to draft more of an income this year than it has last year. Right?
Yes. Yeah. What, what, what we've done throughout this process is to simply try to budget more accurately, both expenses and revenues, to have an accurate picture of the financials of the marina. So, so that, that is why you see a reduction there. That's, it's, it isn't because they're making less money, we're just budgeting a little bit more closely to what their revenue typically is.
I just wanted to talk about that publicly, where we talk about these things constantly, and there's money being put into them and grants and a lot of Richard's work. I just wanted to acknowledge that the, the numbers on paper align with the work that's been put in.
Mr. Mayor, if you're good with it, I can move on to protection.
One quick question.
Sorry.
I just want to, since it's going to be something we talk about in our next meeting, and we have a few weeks in between, then I, I kind of want to highlight one thing. It came from committee this evening around the sewer rate adjustment, and I guess I'll ask the question, if we're taking a look at sewer revenues right now, if we imagine ourselves a year from now, and we go with the committee's recommendation to stagger the increase for two years, when we are looking at the sewer revenues a year from now, will there be a deficit in that line?
I certainly can't predict the future.
Okay.
And I can't predict what sort of projects we will have to undertake throughout this year. But yes, it is likely if you do not do the full increase, you will likely see a deficit in the sewer department.
Okay. Just something, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was on the.
Okay.
I think, I, I think my questions are done. Anyone else? Okay. I think we can move on, Jacob.
Okay. Want me to go over the rest of the revenues?
Absolutely, please.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yep.
So the next department is protection, that's our public safety. We have, we have discussed, I think, both at the council level and certainly internally with our public safety department heads, the need to examine the subsidy structure that we charge the towns of Verona for both fire and ambulance services, and the town of Orland for ambulance services. That formula that is used has been around for a very long time, and I'm not saying that it is wrong, but I think it's always good to reexamine how we do business and make sure that we are charging an appropriate, appropriate amount to each of these communities for the services that we provide to them. But at this point in the game, these, these towns have already adopted their budgets. They're, it's a little late to say, hey, gotcha, we want to charge you a whole lot more at this point of the game. I think it'll be important to have input from both of those commu- communities and just an open discussion with both of those communities. I don't want to, you know, come in with a last minute, gotcha, here's a considerably higher bill. But I do think we need to evaluate how, how that is done. But for this year, we are proposing just a flat thirty percent increase to those, which it, it may sound like a lot, but it, it's pretty reasonable for something that has not been really adjusted for quite some time. So that's what, those lines are there. The two-two oh, twenty-two oh one police fees and fines, that is reimbursement from the school, from the RSU for the school resource officer. So that is where that lives. Of course, the animal fees, there's fees generated from the animal shelter.
On that topic, when, when we're talking about the contributions from the other municipalities and everything, we had discussed the idea in the last meeting about having a budget meeting in December in preparation for, for next year, doing a six-month scenario to prepare and evaluate. I think, I think you're, you're right on par with your thought process, and I think we should lean into that a little more during that meeting in December, if you were to keep that in mind and maybe prepare a little more info for that then.
Absolutely.
If that works for you.
Absolutely. Good. Department fifty-two streets and ways, that's highway. The, really, the, the only revenue there is the local road assistance program, our funds, that seventy-five thousand is what we, is what the state of Maine gives us to, to put towards our roads. So that is basically the biggest piece of that budget. There was, I believe, in last year's budget, there was an offset there, that three hundred and fifty thousand from a reserve that was used to offset taxes. So that's the, the biggest difference really within that department there. Health and sanitation, four thousand and three there, that, those are fees generated through the transfer station, the, the items, the demolition debris, the couches and other various things that residents pay when they go to the transfer station, that is what that line is for. We are no longer receiving the four thousand dollars for the M R C. And the Spofford funds are, it's essentially an endowment, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, that is intended to be used for the needy. We have historically pulled four thousand five hundred dollars from that on a yearly basis, but it's never really utilized. We typically, we tend to utilize general assistance and go that route. So not proposing to pull anything further from that endowment through this budget. Recreation, the seven thousand and two line, that forty thousand dollars is a reimbursement, or approximately forty thousand dollars is a reimbursement from the RSU for the social worker that we have a memorandum of understanding with the RSU for. She is a town employee, she gets paid by the town, but it is reimbursed from the RSU. And this year, with that position transitioning to a part-time position, this will, the RSU will fully reimburse the costs of that position. There, there's, there will be no expense to the town with that transition to that. The snowmobile reimbursement is a pass-through from the state. That's a, that's a dollar amount based on the number of regis- snowmobile registrations that we do in the office upstairs. We pass that directly on to the snow, our local snowmobile club. The KB, cable T V annual fees, pretty self-explanatory. Throughout the budget process, we, this year, we tried to remove, we tried to do a better job at differentiating the waterfront and the town dock from the marina, which is difficult because they kind of go hand in hand, but it's important, essentially from an accounting perspect- perspective, that if we'd, for whatever reason, were to no longer have the marina ourselves, it will be important for us to be able to differentiate what is marina It will be important for us to be able to differentiate what is Marina revenue and what is town dock revenue. So that is kind of the that was essentially some of those items were pulled from the Marina and placed into this mooring and dock fees.
That would also be helpful if I'm thinking sort of insurance wise, if there was ever a claim needed for revenue loss, if there was a storm or something, we'd be able to identify.
For sure. Yeah, and again, it's difficult because our harbor master is also our our Marina manager. So he's he's doing a lot for two different departments. But and along those lines, cruise ship trash that that previously went into. Had been going into the Marina and that really should be receded into this department here.
As long as you know the difference, I'm good.
Yeah, okay, all right. Cemetery reserve, nothing there. That sixty two thousand dollars was for the fence project that we did at Oak Hill last year. No anticipated projects there. And then the both the sewer and the Marina departments. Those, of course, are our enterprise accounts. Those have to match the revenue accounts and the expense accounts, those budgets have to match. So that's where we talk about the need for sewer fee increases. That thirty five ten line is what drives the total number for sewer bills. So again, I kind of went through a lot there, happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think we're good.
Okay. Also included in your packet was the second draft of the expense budgets. And I included in your packet a memo kind of detailing what those expenses, those changes were. Obviously, we talked about most of those, if not all of those things through the council process, the budget process. So overall, I believe it's a I should tap it in front of me, but I don't, a five point nine five percent increase over last year. Which we're quite proud with seeing how we started off at eleven percent. So we appreciate the. Both the work that our department heads have put in throughout this process, but also the input from the council and the public throughout this process. So again, I'm I'm happy to answer any questions about the overall budget.
Oh, there it is. Twenty eight, well, twenty seven, twenty eight, I'm on twenty eight.
The memo was super helpful. Again, I mean, we say it at every meeting, but just the lift that you guys have done to get to that number is incredible. Just really appreciate that.
So we're. Sorry, Jason.
No, it's okay. I was just sort of seconding, seconding.
So ours is five point nine five, but we're looking at a total of six point eight, is that roughly?
For all three things?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
County, education.
Correct.
It's quite a trim from eleven point, what was it?
Yeah, I think eleven and a half is 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 where we were, so.
And we'll know mill rate in sometime in June or July?
We usually set it towards the first meeting in July, I believe. So the.
That's been the practice of the town tries to get its commitment. It the rate set and the bills out in the first couple of weeks of July because the first half is due at the end of August. And so. We get it out as soon as we've always tried to get it out as soon as possible. Last year there was delay, you remember, our assessor was on maternity leave. And so we had someone else committed it when the bills went out a little later last year than. But the the rate is generally set the first meeting in July. And that the assessor is still working on valuation, so those should be finalized sometime in June.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I just, I know I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I. I just need to make sure everyone understands that as we look at all these angles and. The percentage of the budget is going up that what Jacob said that they started off at eleven percent. And we have landed at a at a total of six point eight two and including education. I I know we just talked about that, but I really can't stress that enough that. The effort was put into bringing that number down in many ways by a lot of departments. And it is my hope that that is very much so worth everyone's while in the long run. Especially with some restructuring and free and rich up and just working on a lot of the ideas that have been kicked around, so. I really hate to bring that up again, but I feel like it it just it has to be done because as these numbers increase, it's important to show that it could have been much worse.
I, yeah, I think I agree with you. I think our efficiency, I think we're going to see a very positive result from all this.
Correct.
From this time next year, I I think of the efficiency rate is going to be way up.
And we're blessed to have the team that we have to to manage it for the services that this community has. And wants to maintain, we're blessed to have the people that we have figuring these things to maintain that level of service. And reduce a initial proposed budget by five percent. So thank you for that.
Well, to. Town managers, she was the one that coined the remark about taking a scalpel to the budget following on to it. What Steve said here about, you know, for the first time ever, we have a fire department up to speed with. People resources, police department, full resources, there have been no layoffs. Dispatches up to service. One of the things that came out in the school budget meeting last night, no layoffs this year coming about. And go back and review the twenty articles that everybody received a copy of in their mailbox. They took their budget numbers down literally to the penny. That's how detailed that they got. So. It's it's been quite a ride.
Uh, just real briefly, I'm the weird one and this is my, one of my favorite things is budget. Also because it speaks to what the priorities of everyone is going to be as we move forward. I feel like it has to be said, just to kind of reiterate what Council Bishop and Council Rabs and even Council Rankin have said. You, Council Hare. In the memo that you sent out, Jacob. With some of the additions into the budget, those are things that this council added back in. That that the department heads had trimmed out and the and the council had decided that we were going to, we were going to. Add them back in or get creative in certain lines, for example, the historical society. That may be a line that doesn't get spent. It may be a line that does. But in terms of getting creative here, I think we that there's been good work there, but also it should be said that, you know. The the council said, actually, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna invest in that line, actually. Despite your guidance. But I appreciate the effort that went into that guidance. And I think one thing that will never show up in a budget line that should be called out is this. Our town manager at present is getting done on the thirtieth of June. Our town manager easily could have been here until December thirty first. That was the original plan. And I think the fact that she isn't because she recognized that she didn't need to be. Speaks to her commitment and to doing the right thing. And so that's never going to show up in a budget line because, right, just how it lies out. But I feel like it needs to be mentioned, yes, because. Sue Lassard, quite frankly, is not getting paid for six months when that was part of the original plan and that's real money. So and I think that's because she does the right thing and because. After the council made our decision or or excuse me, after she realized the job you were doing and we made our decision, she realized that she could do that, so. Anyway, I'm done putting words in our town manager's mouth, but I wanted to to highlight that. Anything else?
I can I say one thing? I'm not a counselor, but I I do want to speak to the fact that. The reason I have every confidence in leaving at the end of June is, to be perfectly honest, since February, my primary role here. And Bucksport has been dams and landfills. Contract negotiations. And sounding board for the budget, but. You have chosen well and Jacob and his team, which it now is, will be. There's no hit the ground running, he's already on the ground doing the work. And you only have to look around, I I mean, the headlines in today's paper tell you how some communities are dealing with their employees and doing business. And that's not Bucksport. So I I just want to thank you all for all the years that I've been able to. Work with you and look forward to getting through. The adoption of this budget in June and. Wrestling dams and landfills to the ground and letting Jacob wrestle everything else.
Thank you. Thanks, Sue. Anything else? I did not think, folks, that we would be ready to adjourn tonight at eight o'clock, but here we are if there is nothing. Oh, you do? All right.
Well, I still have a couple of burrs under the saddle and one of them is here is the introductory lead sheet. The last bullet here says about a seventeen thousand dollar appropriation pending further discussion. So we'll have that at another time and another burr under the saddle is an additional thirty thousand dollars under recreation. But we want to adjourn tonight and address it later, but those are, that's almost fifty thousand dollars worth of. Money.
Are you talking about the the library?
Yes. Bucks Library and and the Historical Society.
I think, go ahead, Sue.
What you're doing is is sending this budget that you've got in front of you right now. To public hearing on June twelve, I think it is. That the date. And at that time, you'll have a public hearing and you will decide how much of it you adopt or how much you don't or whatever. But the the decision, the public hearing that Mayor Bissonette was referring to earlier. Is on the budget that Assistant Manager Grant just presented to you. That's so what came out of all of your work thus far. And unless you change some of those numbers tonight for what goes out to public hearing, that will go to public hearing and be the basis that you work from on the twelve.
Works for me, thank you. Okay, it's almost there.
All right, no problem. If there's. All is in favor, opposed. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.